We may wait for Mayor for the Senate to ask that all cell phones and electronic devices be either turned off or placed on silent while the meeting is in session. Thank you very much for your cooperation.
Okay, our call order of regular Tuesday meeting, March 18th, the St. City Council. We had no closed session today, but you please stand and join us in pledge. Tonight's pledge will be led by Manana Delatorre. Now, would you please listen to the pledge?
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united states.
First, first of all.
Counselor Agent Peter Brooks, number four. Counselor Agent Brooks, number four. Counselor Agent Peter Brooks, number four. Hi, can you turn it over?
I'm here. Okay, we're going to have our special presentation and awards tonight. We're going to be presenting awards to honor and recognize my stamp as President of Distinction for two oh two three. And I'm going to turn it over to the following person, Carol Warren, our Councilman, who came up with this idea about COVID-19. Carol, please.
Thanks, all of you for coming. It's such an honor to be able to recognize some of our outstanding citizens in the city of Stanton. So tonight, we are honoring women that help our community if we need to grow. These women have not only made a difference, but have raised the trail for the rest of us and are leaving their mark on Stanton. Would also like to recognize their selection committee that can start making their way up, committee member, Councilmember Alice Van, who's on her way. Jenny Schaber, Pamela Shunover, Giovanna Ramirez can make it tonight. But I want to thank them for their time and efforts in reviewing the application. So, we can have the committee come up and press? Or are you gonna? Yes, up here, Pam.
Don't bite me.
Huh? Oh. This way they all can see. Okay. First up is Dr. Karine Kavanagh, and she happens to be my vet, and she competes for a lot of the furry citizens of the city of Stanton. And what she does that's so incredible is after doing all the vet work for all the animals, she also runs a low-cost fay and neuter clinic that is just jam-packed. And people are bringing, you know, all the cat rescues, they come to her, you know, all the local people that are just flooded with cats. It's a real crisis. And so anyway, I just wanted to honor Dr. Karine Kavanagh. She can come up?
We all try to add her staff for the vet center, right there.
Wait, one more.
Karen Miles is the owner and president and chief executive officer of W Power LLC. W Power donated every place, everyone place scholarship fund and has provided annual funding for the Stanton Central Park since its opening in 2016. Karen Miles?
Karen Oliver is a donor and supporter of many local charitable organizations in addition to her day job as being an author. Her award-winning novels spun and heartwarming with strong, intelligent, independent women leading. Some of her accolades include Book of the Year, Best Book for Historical Fiction, second place for Best Detective Fiction, and the list goes on. So can Karen come up?
Ashlyn Shoup is a passionate about serving our community through her nonprofit Make a Difference Every Day, M.A.S.T., May, pardon me? Sorry about that. For others. Her mission is to make a difference every day in the lives of the people she comes across and to make every human being feel loved by providing hygiene kit, hot meals to our unhoused residents. Ashlyn has also joined sources with the social, special education programs in Orange County to provide opportunities for students to enhance their life and skill, lifestyles.
Next up is Nina Delatorre. She is the owner of Golden Touch Auto Center and is a pillar of the Stanton Business Community. Nina has been a contributor and supporter of Stanton Cancer Relays, Thanksgiving dinners at Aries Cafe, Boys and Girls Club Golf Tournament, Stanton Pancake Breakfast, and Santa Siren for the past 25 years. Nina not only provides financial support, but rolls up her sleeves and leads by example. Nina?
Beatrice Rodriguez is always eager to support the Stanton Community Engagement Advisory Committee in events, meetings, and in self-personnel with her times when it comes to supporting the Stanton community. She has volunteered for many years to support events in the city and the programs at the Boys and Girls Club of Stanton. Her leadership has also inspired her children of the importance of community service and giving back. Beatrice Rodriguez.
Erica Juarez Cruz is a valuable part of the services provided at the Stanton Family Resource Center. She is compassionate, empathetic, and patient with all of her clients and allows them to open up on their own time. She truly goes above and beyond. Erica?
Jenny Feltito is a member of the Stanton Family Resource Center. Jenny works hard to connect families to the vital resources and uses her knowledge and experience to strengthen Stanton families. Jenny Feltito.
Erin Runyon. She's a true tragedy. We've all come to know Erin over the years. She's a caring, hard-working member of our community. She works proudly and tirelessly to help families strive and strengthen the community through the Joyful Child Foundation. She is an agent of change and deserves the recognition of her efforts in teaching children and parents how to protect themselves. Erin?
Juanise Garcia is an English teacher, a club advisor, basketball coach at Western High School who greatly cares about her students. Juanise is also a board member of the Stanton Community Foundation where she leads the group by volunteering her time to provide assistance where help is needed in the Stanton community. Juanise Garcia.
Lee Wilkins. She has been a Stanton Lions Club member for 10 years who lives by the Lions Club motto, "We serve." She not only provides assistance for all Lions Club events, but also helps in providing free eye care and glasses to children and seniors in our community. Lee is a true lion with a big heart for helping people. Lee?
Lorena Flores is the distinguished woman of our community. She tirelessly volunteers for local school, Lawrence Elementary School, Aladina Junior High, and represents our community in the Garden Grove School Unified School District. Lorena has never missed, I'm sorry, volunteering for an event held by the city of Stanton or assisting in local charities with their, Lorna?
Mavis Ethanz is normally on our committee, but we wouldn't let her be on the committee this year, so. Mavis Ethanz is one of the longest-serving volunteers in the history of Stanton. She has been chair of the Americana Awards with the Cypress College Foundation and was awarded Stanton Citizen of the Year in 2017 for her philanthropy. Mavis continues to help her church and sings in the choir. Over the years, she has volunteered for the Stanton Lions Club, Stanton Chamber of Commerce, Women's Division, Stanton Cancer Relay for Life, the Annual Stanton Car Show, Casa Youth Shelter, Friends of the Stanton Lions, Aries Cafe, Turkey Dinner, and countless other local events at charities that we do not have the time to list. Come on up, Mavis.
Sarah Neal Grant. She will not be here this evening. She's in Arizona and hoping her mom she is not doing anything. Recently retired from the Boys and Girls Club of Stanton and continues her work through her volunteer service by helping with their annual firework booth at Stanton each year. Sarah also helps the Youth Assistance Foundation with their firework booth and Santa Siren event. She helps us getting ready for the gymnasium with breakfast goodies, lunch, and cleaning up and making sure the whole event is a huge success.
Sharon Chandler has been a Stanton resident for over 40 years. For the past 15 years, she has been a member of the Stanton Chamber of Commerce Women's Division where she helps fundraise for local charities. Sharon not only brings the Women's Division together, but also the community. Sharon?
Sophia Manuel is an advocate for those who seek support through the Family Resource Center and goes the extra mile for those she helps. She is a problem solver and provides the best services for her clients. She is patient, has great listening skills, and is a great communicator and collaborator with the Stanton community.
Tina Thomas is an avid volunteer and shows her help for the food bank and assistance for our local food distribution. Tina also volunteers for many city events and local charities. She's a wonderful asset to have on any volunteer team and deserves recognition. Tina? Can I have all the awardees come out that will take a group photo? I also want to say congratulations to all of them, their dedication to supporting their community as well. Are we doing wide?
I want everybody to note that I always think that behind every good man is a good woman, well, tonight, behind all the great women. May I have your attention? On behalf of the entire city council, we would like to thank you for all of your hours and all the effort. This is why Stanton is as impressive as it is because of people like you who come out and give your heart and dedicate all of your hours to help our community, being the community that exists. Let's give all the ladies one big round of applause. At this time, I'm a qualified Councilman Delatorre who applaud for the proclamation for declaring serious support for the Iranian-American community. I want to tell you.
Awesome. Thank you, everybody, for being here. Due to the recent and horrific events that are still happening around, we are going to present a proclamation declaring the city's support for Iranian-American community. Whoever I reached out to, please go up to the front and receive the proclamation.
Again, if there's a representative for the Iranian community to receive the proclamation, if you could please come to podium.
We can give it to our introductions. Try up here.
Oh, there we go.
Thank you.
All my boys. The Mexicans.
Hey, gentlemen, come up to the picture with the camera. Ladies, come on, let's all get up here. Willie, come on, don't be hiding back, huh?
Everyone ready? Okay. One, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, Dana, you might come up for a moment. You can say a word, please. As you know, in December, we lost a great businessman and a grandpa and this all-around great guy with a baby for his husband. He passed away in the Christmas holidays. So now we have an opportunity to adjourn the city council meeting in his honor, and also we have a proclamation. And so what we would like for you to do is, what is convenient, is to schedule that and bring the entire family here at that meeting so that we can make that presentation with you and your family. So please let our city court know our convenient opportunity where everybody's together. So aunts, uncles, cousins, relatives, anybody that you would like to invite, we would appreciate it very much. And again, our sincere condolences, many is in our prayers. You know, he is going to be so goodness for the things that he has done and volunteered for our community over the years. But I know that you will be carrying on this tradition as an example of your glory tonight. And I'm so happy to see the Bubuets here. I thought they would be in the Caribbean or something. But translations again on the writing on Saturday, it was a very beautiful writing. Anyway, let's give the many family. Councilman and associate, cheer up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I'm Assistant State Councilor Ben O'Connell, Lieutenant of Public Affairs. Good to see everyone again. If you'd run through really quick, I want to just say about being here from Sacramento, D.C. Lots going on, and I'll be missed last month, but it'll be good because now we're really in the full swing of things in Sacramento especially. So really quickly on Sacramento, we'll start here. As you know, we're in the first year of a two-year session. We did come back in January, February 17 was the deadline. The number is just over 2,600 this year of new bills that were introduced. That's one of the largest in the last decade. You might be asking why? Probably the two most common reasons are, number one, we have a very new legislature as I told you for the last couple of meetings now, and a lot of new ideas, new concepts that have, you know, predetermined bill packages when they come to Sacramento, right? And the other reason is this is the first year that we have started a session without the COVID-19 restrictions that we had the first time, which limited the number of bills that each legislator could introduce. Making it a little bit more palpable and, you know, not knowing how many committee hearings they would have and all that kind of stuff. So this is the first year that all the training wheels are off and everyone's back, so 2,600 could be the normal for the next couple of years. Pretty daunting, you know, I have to read through all of them, so pretty daunting. But about around 1,000 of them were intent or spot bills, meaning there wasn't anything in them that actually did anything, they were placeholders. So they have to be introduced before the deadline, but they can be amended later to actually have substantive language in. So we call those intent or spot bills, and there was quite a few of them, over 1,000. And so over the last couple of weeks, last couple of months, those have been amended and the language has actually gone into them, and they need to be amended before they can be heard in committee. So right now, we are in the middle of policy committees up in Sacramento. They'll have until second week of April to pass all of their bills from the first committee, and then we'll kind of go through into the fiscal committees from there. Moving on quickly to the budget, it's a really hot topic right now in Sacramento. June 15th is the constitutional deadline to pass a budget, as you all know. The legislature does not pass the budget by June 15th, they do not get paid anymore. So you can bet that that budget is passed June 15th every year. However, in the last couple of years, we've gotten to a happen of passing what we'll call a budget framework that satisfies the requirements of the Constitution for passing a budget, but it's really not a budget in terms of actually what needs to go in the budget. I do expect that to happen this year again, so I do expect a framework to be passed by June 15th. I don't expect that framework to do anything. After that, we will have additional budget discussions going into June, July, maybe August this year. And all of that is because the governor has moved back the tax deadline for Californians due to the major storms to October. So we might not even have a clear picture of our tax revenues collected until October, even November of the year, which means you could see a previous year's budget in December or January. So it's going to be a very different year when it comes to the budget. So all of those programs that are funded will have to, you know, get backdated or back or forwarddated. It'll be pretty interesting to see. We haven't seen this in quite some time. Really quickly on some priorities that's going on this week and last week. As you remember, I presented on a topic the governor's been very passionate about, which was this concept of price gouging at the bump, right, for the gas prices that were skyrocketing in California. They actually did a special session of the California Legislature just to address it, meaning it's the only topic they can talk about during that time. So after several weeks, months, and several iterations of bills that were, you know, defeated in the committee and revived and backed back and forth, SPX 1-2, it's a long way of saying just another bill, was eventually passed by the legislature. It's currently on the governor's desk right now. I have to, might have signed it in the last hour, I don't know. But it's on his desk right now, he's very much expected to sign it. But this is their compromise legislation that would establish an independent watchdog within the California Energy Commission to be watching prices daily, 24/7, daily of gas prices and all supply level increments, right? So all across the supply line where the price is, to be able to track and gather data, sort of a data collection bill, gather data about why prices aren't the way they are and be able to tell if anyone is spiking for no reason. It also establishes a gross gasoline refining margin through regulation, so it's not done in the bill, but the CDC will have to do a regulatory process with the public to be able to determine what their maximum margins can be at every step of the way on that supplier. And then also, most importantly... And then also most importantly, authorizes financial penalties also through regulation that could be quite punitive, up to $20,000 a day, up to $500,000 per cycle. So it could be pretty punitive to gas companies to be able to prove that they're not price Moving on to a couple of bills of interest, I would thematically talk about, you know, this year we're seeing three things, I would say, the most. We're seeing Prop 47 recap and the public safety side of things for offenders and for theft and crime. We're also seeing a lot of fentanyl bills, fentanyl-related bills, as you can imagine, that's a huge topic right now in our local communities and in Sacramento. And we're also seeing housing bills like all this, right? That is never going to go away for quite some time, I would say. But those are kind of the big three that we're coming out of Sacramento right now. So really quickly, I just want to highlight a couple. The first one I'll highlight is SB 423 by Senator Leoner, probably the most public housing bill right now and could be the most influential housing bill of the session. It's still very early, so don't poke me on that. But right now, it is the hottest topic on housing. This bill would eliminate the sunset on SB 35 or streamline ministerial approvals for certain kinds of housing projects. So currently, as you know, the city council is under SB 35 provisions. If certain housing developments meet certain threshold requirements, that would streamline their ministerial approval for objective design standards. However, that hit sunset in 2026 through Portland, but this bill would remove that sunset as well as add in other places in the state that actually weren't, that did not have to deal with SB 35, like the entire coastline, which was exempt. Now the coastline is going to be a part of SB 35 according to this bill. And then one more I do want to mention is, let's see, I'll choose AB 1379. This one is another ground act bill related to virtual versus in-person meetings. So this is a topic that's very interesting because it transcends just city councils, it's counties, it's school districts, it's water districts, precincts. And we've seen a lot of improvements, I think, in the technology department when it comes to being able to meet remotely through the pandemic. But there's also been a lot of reluctance in the legislature to be able to give the full flexibility to local governments to determine what they want to do, right? Some city councils want to meet in person, some want to meet remote. So how do you make that happen while maintaining the spirit of transparency? So they've been reluctant to do anything on the ground act. You'll do remember, there was some progress made last year with AB 2449 that allowed some flexibility for individual council members to meet remotely if they would like, up to a limited time period here for a legitimate excuse. So this bill would kind of throw that away and say, if you want to meet remotely individually, you can. And most importantly, which is kind of the crux of this issue, you don't have to post where you are and don't have to invite the public to join you where you are during that meeting, which was the big problem with being able to meet remotely, which you can do now, but you have to post it, have to invite the public to be able to be a participant at that location. So that is, you know, very arcane, I would say, very old-school way. So this bill would attempt to override that and just say, you can have the authority if you need it, you don't have to post that. And then switching over to yours to the federal side and maybe some funding side, we are back in the full swing of community project funding at the federal level, which is the other fancy way of saying earmarks. And remember, this is the same process that we were able to successfully get, 850,000 for Orangewood Market through, at the time, Congressman Bonnetal's office, as well as, I think the number now is 10 million for the Northridge County Public Safety Collaborative, also through this community project funding process. So this year, we were able to work with staff to submit two additional projects to Congressman Coria's office, which is a new congressman, the Dotson Park Community Center, which is, I think, a project you're familiar with that we have submitted before in the past, and we dusted it off, submitted it again, talked to the staff about it. And then a new one, the Public Safety Center rehabilitation for that building right behind me, to do a lot of repairs and rehabilitations on it, including roofs, plumbing, electrical, and HR. So we did ask for 2 million for the Dotson Park and 1.8 million for the Public Safety Center. That process is very long, it is attached to the federal budget process. So however long the federal budget negotiations take is how long that this is going to take. So there's a big change this year in that the Republicans have taken the House in DC. They have made their stamp on what accounts are eligible, what accounts are not eligible. They have limited the overall community project funding to 0.5% of the budget. Last year it was 1%. So they've cut that in half right away from the House side. The Senate did not do the same, so there's going to have to be some sort of agreement eventually, which is, that's going to be part of the overall budget negotiations in DC. So it's possible we don't see anything until, you know, end of the year or early next year if they continue to do continuing resolutions. I should have mentioned, sorry, we also submitted those same projects to the Senator Pidiya and Senator Fine Science part of their process as well, so all three were covered. And then a quick update on grants that we worked on, Housing Urban Development Grant for a Housing Related Hazards and Wet-Based Capital Fund Program for Superrecreation at Pia Pacific, as well as a Department of Parks and Rec stateside land and water conservation fund for a couple of upgrades that stay in Central Park, including some lighting, pathing, tennis courts, et cetera over there. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about anything I presented on.
Regarding the SPX-2 bill, do you foresee a, how much of a drop in gas prices do you think this will create?
I'm not even positive that they would say it will drop gas prices. It's more of a, it's a data collection and, you know, finger on the pulse of every line of the supply chain. It very well could drop prices, I'm just, I'm not going to be able to tell you. Or it could come back and say, that is their cost, they're doing everything they can to keep it low and their costs are going up. I don't know. But I think it's a, I would imagine it's a future tool so that this can't happen the same aggressive rate that it did this time. But I don't think anyone knows exactly what it's going to do to prices immediately.
And the cost of that oversight will get paid through the gas tax or?
That's a great question. I can go, I can give you the answer to that. I don't have it with me. There is a cost of this program to the state. I would imagine it is being reimbursed either through the general fund or through, you know, penalties and fines and whatever they can find coming out of it. But I can get back to that, that's interesting.
On that particular bill, it seems like what the gasoline companies or petroleum companies always talk about is a world price.
What, sorry?
A world price. And it's based on all our gas, I guess, amounts that they charge is based on that, not necessarily the gas that's already in the tanks or in transit, it's whatever, that world price, and it changes on a daily basis, I think. Is the bill affecting that at all?
It does change on a daily basis, and I would say that the, you know, war in Eastern Europe did not help anything when it came to that, right? That was an excuse given by the oil companies of why prices went up, like you said, on a worldwide scale. There's also lengths of refineries going down for maintenance, right, on the West Coast, just right here. And what that does to the price really increases it. I mean, those questions that this watchdog will be looking for is, did it have to go down for maintenance? Did you have to do two at a time, right? Could you have done separately? Can we coordinate a little bit here so it's not, you know, everyone going up?
But we closed them down twice a year, don't we, to change our gas?
We do, and there's, we do have to close them down, you can't just keep them all open. But maybe there's a better way, you know, to be regulated so that it doesn't spike the way it did. But no, I haven't heard any discussions specifically answering your question in terms of what it would do to the world price, but we are a large consumer of that oil worldwide. Any other questions?
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to the consent calendar. All audits can be taken. Any motion? Is there any? Who is?
Mr. Mayor, we have none.
Any staff request?
We have none for staff duty.
Anyone from the public? Okay. Is there a motion? Hold on.
Second.
Go ahead, Madam President.
Mr. Mayor, we have a motion by Councilmember Taylor, second by Mayor Prossenian, Alana P. Roll Call vote. Assemblymember Torres?
Yes.
Assemblymember Taylor?
Yes.
Assemblymember Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Prossenian?
Yes.
And Mayor Shaw.
Yes. I have a question for you, Chairman. There was a new woman that came out to her, we can just do an unanimous proclamation. If there's an opposition, isn't that, can that be done with public strategy?
So the, I believe the rule you're referencing is there's a law that essentially requires, particularly with, when you're dealing with public access, I think, be remote, is the public has to be made aware of who voted how. So in situations where there is a unanimous vote, everyone is aware about the council voted. In a situation where there are split votes, it just has to be announced again, who's in the majority and who's in the minority. As to whether there has to be a roll call vote or all in favor or all opposed, I think it always depends on the council, I think, probably in bigger topics, a roll call system to clean your vote, and it's clear and you don't have to, after the fact, talk about who's in it for and against it. So I think it's more just making sure the public's aware of how each member voted on each account.
Yeah, I just know that was a very, but that's usually worked well with people at 23, 24 members on the floor.
Sure.
But since we're sitting as a whole group, you should be there. Anyway, thank you for that. Okay. You know, I forgot to pull item six up. How about you bring that back, if it's okay?
We should have a discussion.
I'd like to bring it back if the council is okay with it, so I'd like to make a motion to bring six up back.
Are we able to fully check out now?
Yeah, so I will agree with the technical motion, so you'll have to make a motion to reconsider. If that motion is seconded and passed, you would then go and ask for pulling out that item and you reapprove the same.
And doesn't that have to be done by a person that wrote it for it?
In the majority.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll go ahead and make the motion to, I think this is six up.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
I'm a favor.
Hi.
May I vote? Can we pick out the thing for reconsideration?
Thank you. The reason I'm bringing this up is because I have a couple of questions. Crossing guards are an important thing in our community, but I was curious that, I know that a portion of the Savannah school district is in the city of Anaheim. Do we find out if they're paying any of the costs?
They are not paying any of the costs of the contract with the city standing and our crossing guard service provider.
Okay. Are there examples or any justification of that?
I don't know if historically the council has ever given staff direction to go pursue cost sharing in the city.
Okay, my other point was is that we get tax dollars, it's on your tax bill. The schools get 87 cents of every dollar, so we get 13 cents or less of every tax dollar is going to our local schools. So from a affordability, because property tax is 87.13, I was curious to why they don't have the ability to pay for crossing guards. That was my question.
Wait. I think I read something on this today. Don't we just pay for the crossing guards for the three or four schools that we have within Stanton? So we're not paying for anything at Anaheim, are we?
We're only paying for three schools, Robert and Isle, St. Academy, that's Turtle Falls, our elementary school, and.
Well, some of the kids come from out of district, other schools too. Anaheim is just, I mean, a walk away for some of the schools. A lot of the kids come from other cities. I mean, they have money to pay for this in the budget, so I'm wondering why.
Didn't we get some money? Didn't we get some, were you sharing money here recently?
I think.
Sharing money here. Somebody, those are the districts?
Yes, so both districts have agreed to share the cost to cover one-third of the costs.
That seems like a great deal.
Okay, well, that was a bargain that we struck a while back. Where is the breakdown?
I'm sorry.
So this was recently negotiated after the council reviewed the item in September of 2022, directed staff not to approve or to contract, directed staff to go negotiate with each of the school districts. So staff did so. We were able to negotiate a one-third cost share on a year-by-year basis, and everyone reviewed their budget, which equates to, our cost per school is approximately $15,000 for the academic year. So each of the districts agreed to cover one-third of that, so approximately $5,000 of that $15,000 cost.
Okay, but this is a three-year contract for 137,000.
Correct.
So we're talking 45,000.
So the Magnolia School District was able to commit to a three-year commitment of cost sharing, Savannah School District was only able to commit to a one-year cost sharing. They said that they would revisit it each year as they review their operational budget.
Okay, so right now, it's 45,000 a year, about, right?
Correct.
And right now, coming here, we pay 15,000?
So we would pay 30,000 and the school districts would pay 15,000.
Okay, so we're actually paying 15%.
So the total cost per school is 15,000 times three. The school districts are willing to pay 15,000 and we'll pay 30,000, so it's that one-third, two-thirds cost share.
Yeah, why are we paying 30,000? Maybe we should put it equally, not all three.
Well, there's one school district that has two of the elementary schools, so they're, each school is willing to cost share at a one-third rate. If the council wants to direct staff to go back and try to negotiate a higher cost sharing, certainly we can do so, but I will say that it took us a while to get to the one-third cost sharing. The school districts did bring up that they believe Measure GG was passed on the commitment that school crossing guards would be covered by that additional sales cap. So there was a little bit of negotiating that was required to get them to a greater cost share at this point.
Well, that sounds very similar to all the bonds they passed recently, to where we're paying over $1,000 on our tax bill of the bond money. So, you know, I mean, cat for cat, you know? I mean, if you want to get political, I think that we pay a lot more in taxes to the schools than they give for a school price. I just want to kind of make a rant for transparency, that there is a lot of, there's a lot of money that we pay in the schools. Yes, still, you know?
Yeah, in the past, I brought this up a lot because, you know, I'm trying to be cognizant of our budget as well, but I think Canada did an excellent job negotiating on Stanton for this year, and so we get sick hand on them again next year, in the year after, and they will succumb to her ways soon. So, I mean, I think it's a good start.
Go ahead.
As someone who's a mother of a young child who does attend elementary school, I am very grateful for crossing guard services in our city. And I think that the fact that all three of these locations are in our city, it's reasonable for us to allocate a portion of our budget for this, especially since when GG was getting passed, that was a commitment that we made, is that some of those funds would go towards crossing guard services. Additionally, I think the fact that we did not, a third of the cost sharing is a huge win since we didn't get any in the past. So thank you so much, staff, for that aggressive negotiating. And I'm very pleased with what we have in front of us, and I hope that everybody considers accepting it as is, because I think this is a huge win, and I think that our kids and our residents deserve crossing guard services, regardless of when or not the schools are able to pay for it, as many other cities in the county paid for crossing guard services. So I think it's reasonable to accept that we do, at least a portion of it as well, given that GG was marketed as a way to pay for crossing guard services.
Okay, I will agree with you, the importance of crossing guards. I just wanted to bring out about that. I think we had discussed it a few years ago, to make sure that there was some activity that we weren't paying the whole cost, and that eachbody who was paying their fair share of which one school stepped up to the plate but didn't commit for the next two, but of course, we can, I go back to that next year. So that means, I'll go ahead and move six up.
Hi, Mayor, sorry to interrupt, but before you guys take an action, since it was pulled, we should see public comment on that.
pulled, we should see public comment on that item. We're taking official.
Anybody from Savannah? We're about speaking our part. Okay, go ahead, Adam Kurt.
With the motion by Mayor Schaubert, a second by Councilmember Torres, to proceed with recommended actions along through floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? During that item passes?
Okay, public hearings, we have none. We have none. New business authorization for council members to attend upcoming meetings and events.
Yes. Good evening, honorable mayor members of the council. Pursuant to the city of Stanton travel reimbursement policy, a council member must receive city council approval prior to a trip to trip with the five hundred dollars. Council will consider the following request for travel for Mayor Schaubert. At the Southern California Association of Government, also known as SCAG, twenty-twenty-three Regional Conference and General Assembly will be held this year from May fourth through fifth in Montezar, California. This event brings together state and local elected officials, CEOs, business and civic leaders, transportation and environmental stakeholders, local government staff and others to convene on topics including mobility hubs and the region's multimodal future, accelerating clean transportation, job growth, and inclusive economy, and housing the region. The mayor had previously requested and received council approval to attend the twenty-twenty-three League of California City City Leader Summit, Mayor Pro Tempan, Councilmember Torres, which she has since rescinded. The total cost of this trip is estimated to range between seven hundred to eight hundred and seventy dollars. The fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three operating budget includes eleven thousand dollars for crossroad travel and conferences, which to date has been entirely allocated, along with an additional fifteen hundred dollar appropriation as approved by the council at its meeting of February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three. Tonight's recommended action is to authorize the mayor's attendance at the proposed event and authorize staff to make a budget adjustment to cover travel costs. That concludes my stop report. I have no more to answer any questions.
Have you sent people to visit the desk?
Yeah, I go every year. I'm, I'm actually voting, I'm the voting leader for the city on issues. So I've been, I would actually be voting down yet. In the past, when I could go, I, we set, we always send a home security. Wait.
I've gone to it. It's an excellent conference. It really is. You know, what you learn there, you can seriously apply this thing.
Yeah, I agree with, with you guys. If, if you have a choice of going to Sacramento and logging and going to SCAG, which is cheaper, I would recommend you go to SCAG because one of the nights is actually paid by SCAG. And so it's, it's, yeah, going to Sacramento now. I'm not sure. I mean, we have a really great lobby. It's up there working for us now. But this would be a really good thing for you, you guys to attempt if Palm Springs. Not because of Palm Springs, but because the program is much better than lobbying up in Sacramento. So, I mean, that's your decision. I, I didn't, I'm not going to Sacramento because there's no sense in all the thrivers going up there. But I do need to go to represent the city of SCAG. The other thing that's nice too is I'll be able to report back to Orange County San because I have board members with OCA and OCA also has ties with SCAG and, and voted. Okay, that's my opinion.
Do I have a motion?
I'll take it.
I'll second that.
Roll call back, Kurt. Sure. If anybody would like to speak on the mayor going to SCAG. Okay, I'll close it.
We had a motion by Councilmember Taylor, a second by Councilmember Warren, who were to put recommended actions along with two. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing that, item nine, please pass.
I'm not quite sure why we had never public hearing. I mean, I wasn't a public hearing.
So public comment on purely matter of voting, council action, require a public comment before the council takes action.
Because why isn't you that beginning of the meeting? We have people that would like to discuss an item that's on the agenda. They can put this on.
So the ground up requires that the public get to be presented an opportunity to speak for the item or during the item and before the council takes action. So the, the, the city has a public comment section, for example, at the very, very beginning that can suffice. But for generally, you know, action items, there are the, the city council that permit the public to speak on those specific items.
Okay, so maybe we might consider moving public comments to the beginning of the agenda rather than the end so that people don't have to sit through the whole meeting before they get a chance to discuss things with that. I think that a lot of times we've had a lot of awards that we sort of gone, I do that. That might be a nice thing because somebody doesn't have to sit here and pull the clarifier. If we ever had that before we get a chance to comment. Go ahead.
That control board, we have the public comments.
And the state stand also did have our oral communication as well. But over time, the council decided that rather having the members of the audience hear everything out for if they had anything concerns or concern, we should take that prepared and report to staff. So we should, I would write this, this matter is a little bit different as our state attorney is saying that we have to give public an opportunity to speak on each item. And then a public hearing is more of a noticing requirement that we push out to the public in our closing location. As in the public comment for each item, we don't generally notice without.
Okay, so.
Give them an opportunity to speak in oral communication for any item that's not intended.
Okay, so that being said, why don't we, why don't we bring this back in our experience with the closing comments and then we can decide if we think it the way it is or if we would like to change it and we get everybody's sound. How's that sound?
Okay, and then perfect. Well, when that time comes on the agenda for adding it for initiative, I can.
I'm sure. I'm aware, I think this is an audience of the city council pertaining to restrictions based on curb market.
He is your Cesar Redgill.
Yeah. Good evening, mayor members of the city council. Cesar Redgill, Kirk, both work sites, city engineer. I have a quick presentation, just kind of going over the ordinance, basically, curb markings. We've got a request for red curb. In doing that research, we discovered we have a, a mechanism of implementing markings, curb markers itself, including red curb. So with this tonight, it'll give the city engineer the authority or the direction to install curb markings. Could be green, which is up to a maximum of two hours. White, which includes unloading and loading of passengers. Yellow is a maximum of twenty minutes. And then red forces, no stopping at any time. So this, you know, kind of gives us a mechanism and outputs an ordinance to have this implemented, put that in place. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I, I fully support this. In fact, I brought it up because there are areas in the city that once we complete construction, that obviously traffic problems and parking become a very problem. As an example, Subaru King Market on Magnolia, we've all been there and there are these giant trucks that park by the entryways. And it's like, I ain't rushing to do that with your car coming out of there. You kind of just say a prayer and then you pop out of there. Hope you haven't been hit. It's been really bad. So that was why I first brought it up. I think this will give a seizure of the ability to take care of our needs without paying everything to the company. So I would like to go ahead and make direct made an action. I figure our city engineer has the ability to take control of deciding to curbs that we need in the city. Just a second.
I'll second it.
Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak on this? Okay, good.
Mr. Mayor, we have a motion by Mayor Schaubert, a second by Councilmember Warren, where this item is a third in ordinance, I will proceed with roll call vote. Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Torres?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yeah.
Mayor Quinlan? Yes. And Mayor Schaubert?
Yes.
Thank you. All items passed.
I see. This is consideration of agreements in dependence who entered into national opioid settlements, which have a Oregon Walmart ordinance conceded. Yes, Angie.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, our members of the city council. We have a board designation under the mayor stated city council consideration of opting into settlement agreements with the following departments that entered into national opioid settlement. Previously, the city entered into settlement agreements with the three largest pharmaceutical distributors of opioid painkillers? Painkillers. Litigation brought by states and cities across the United States has resulted in additional settlement agreements. The recommended action for this evening is that the city council find out the document and not put it to equal. Opting to a settlement agreement with the three pharmacy chains and direct the city manager to execute any documents necessary to implement the action. And when possible, allocate the city's designated share of the settlement funds to the county for money. And recommended action number three is opt into a settlement agreement with two opioid manufacturers and direct the city manager to also execute any documents necessary to implement the action. And when possible, allocate the city's designated share of the settlement funds to the county. That concludes staff's report. Staff is available and answering any questions if you have any.
Why is the mayor going to the county?
So the amount of money that the states receive is based on population and our, our allocation amount is very small. As part of the settlement that the council had previously authorized the city manager to accept, it was approximately thirty thousand dollars. And the requirements for how you can spend that money are very specific. They must go to programs or services that directly impact or support opioid addiction. And on top of that, the settlement's requirements in regards to monitoring and reporting on the use of that are very expensive. So for us to take such a small amount of money, stand up a program and manage and monitor it, it's not cost effective. So we are one of twelve or thirteen cities in Orange County that have come together to reallocate our funds to the county board so that they can have a bigger pot of money to then provide these programs with various resources and services. I know one is dedicated to helping incarcerated individuals overcome their addiction to opioids while they are incarcerated. Another program is aimed at helping newborn infants who are born with an addiction to opioids. And another one is town halls coming to the city that have contributed their funds and then distributing free in our name. So the county is able to collectively take these funds, produce programs that provide services throughout the county, and then take on the administrative burden of the monitoring and. And this settlement is projected to have an even smaller contribution specified for the city of Stanton compared to last.
Okay, so the recommended, there are other questions. The recommended action is one, two, and three. Do I have a motion?
All in.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to, to talk about this? Okay, thank you.
We have a motion by Councilmember Warren, a second by Mayor Pro Tempan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing that, Mr. Mayor. Item nine, please pass.
Okay, at this time, I'm open to all communications. At this time, the public interests the city council. The successor agency from the state housing authority, we already, and what is the council successor agency?
This is a joint meeting, please.
No, the successor agency was, that was a group that was put together after we lost redevelopment.
Correct.
Okay, and we, that was terminated. So why do we still have our agenda?
These successor agencies, you know, I think maybe because of the town oversight for?
Yeah. And also, okay, what's the role of successor agency?
I guess, again, this is going to help me out with this.
I am. Successor agency exists until all of the former redevelopment agencies obligations, which are now the obligations of the successor agency to their former redevelopment agency, are all gone. So the way Stanton's successor agency exists, our last and final rocks was approved by the Department of Finance, like, or right when I started in January twenty-twenty. So we're still getting money twice a year from the state in January. And by June first, we're still paying all the debt payments every month. The next meeting, you'll see a monthly investment report, a cash report, and it's usually about three million there. And we pay that for the next six months obligations. So you kind of still sit on this successor agency board until it goes away in about thirty years or something.
Yeah, that's right. But I, I thought that we had, I thought that we had some of that with, with the state. So it's just kind of lingering.
It's still lingering. There's not much action for you to do.
Because we haven't had, the agency, or?
Yeah.
Two or three years, right? I think it's three years, right?
We've had our last and final rocks for three years now.
Three years, right?
Yeah.
So we're, we actually have an agency that we haven't had in court for three years that we still have public hearing time.
All right, and we do bring forth items that are proven of.
Monthly cap, the monthly roll call, cash investment, but it's always just cash now. It's fairly liquid.
So that's why you'll notice at the top of your agenda is joint meeting. So we have that item, we listed, that's the successor agency.
We have no change tonight.
We have to pull over me. I'm pulling me the item out here. It's a convoluted panel. The successor, successor agency needs to prove the minutes, which is why we need a joint. And then once the people are there, then that successor can carry from back and still join. It continues on. But we have, we do have to defer the next. Successor agency. I'm going to give that.
So what do you think, Laura, this meeting?
Well, like the city clerk said, if there's the first meeting of each month in the consent calendar, you're approving the cash investment report with the successor agency. That's really the only recurring report we've provided. We haven't really, there's no other action really for this body to take at this point because there's no other assets of the successor agency. All we have are the bonds that will be paying off. There's no budget to approve because the state's already approved our last final rocks. It's on the city's website. So I guess that's what the city clerk was saying. The first meeting of the month, you're approving the cash investment report for the successor agency. The second meeting of the month, you're approving the minutes that are related to that consent calendar item. So it's always a joint meeting of all three entities, council, successor agency, and a housing authority.
Kirk made my mind, but I think your first body issue was for fifty years. Is that correct?
Yes, right now, the ones that we have on, that are due are, we have three debt issues. We have the two thousand sixteen A and B bonds, because we refunded bonds several times. The ones that are left are the two thousand and sixteen A and B bonds, the two thousand and sixteen C and D bonds, and then the most recent ones, after I started, we did the refund now, same to twenty twenty, refunding bonds. And we can just provide, you know, we'll just let you know when the final payments are. But it's thirty years. There's really not much action to do other than just receiving a final, filing the cash investment report, which is mostly liquid. Because we just get the money we get in June is usually spent by the time we get our next money from the state in June. Oh, and then January, and then we spend that before we get our money from January. It's just really a very short-term, liquid process right now. All we're doing is paying bond payments for the most part. And the city of Stanton itself gets about thirty-three thousand dollars a year right now to the administrate, it's our administration costs allowed for commission account.
Administration trust being taken by the state, is that right?
The state holds their piece before they give us our piece every six months. And so the city of Stanton will get thirty-three thousand of it. And then the rest of the money basically goes to pay the bonds that we have to pay.
And did you renegotiate because we had a chance to get lower interest rate or is that not actually a rhythm with our bond rate? I'm second.
Yes, the successor agency financial advisor, Harold and Associates, they did provide the successor agency guidance to redo the twenty-ten bonds, which is how we got to the twenty-twenty three finance.
Yeah, but we didn't extend the law. We didn't extend the bonds. We just, we just went for a better rate. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, unfortunately, we can't suspend items, but maybe that's a conversation we should have to ask the afternoon.
No, we're not taking any action. I just.
But it's not in the agenda, I want to be that's during the meeting. But yes, we do hold successor agency needs to approve investment report, and they're out for the But yes, we do have successor agency needs to approve investment reports, and they're out for the next five.
Okay. It would be nice to maybe, if you ever would lay an update on that, that would be good.
We can include that as part of the budget.
That'd be good, yeah. We want to stay. I want to close the public conversation. Are there any recommendations?
Mr. Mayor, we don't have none.
Any mayor, chairman, council authority initiating business? Any reports?
Me and a few other council members had the great pleasure of attending the Oil Daddy grand opening on the twenty-first last week, as well as SIA Republic's grand opening on the twenty-third of last week. It was a huge success. I think that it's really wonderful in our staff. And council needs to come and show support to the new businesses that open in our city. And I was really glad to see that we have this giant pair of scissors and we're all ready to go. So thank you, staff, for preparing that and making a really beautiful photo for the new business members. And additionally, I did want to, again, thank council for approving the sponsorship for the Stanton, the twentieth annual Stanton Car Show, which is happening on the twentieth, it's our twentieth annual on the twentieth of May. And it's only going to be twenty dollars for your registration for any cars that want to join. So I'm excited to be able to host that with the Stanton Community Foundation on Monday at 2:00 p.m. So I would welcome the public to attend, and I know all the amazing cars that come and play every year are right next door at Stanton Park. And additionally, the Stanton Community Garden is hosting its third annual Open Garden Day, which is going to be on Thursday, April 22nd, probably 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And it's going to be right at the Stanton Community Garden, which is right next to Stanton Park on the Warren Ross Sports Complex site. So I hope you guys will come. We have invited the University of California Master Garden Preservers there to come and give us a presentation, and answer lots of questions. And last year, Master Gardeners come, and tons of free appetizers, seed giveaways, activities for the kids. But please go. Thank you so much.
Okay, while you're on the roll, I'll touch back to the other agenda.
Which other grand opening, may I ask?
You from Brazil?
Yes, the SIA Republic, yes, I did mention that. That was on the twenty-third of March. And that was when we had the big giant scissors.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, so I'd like to thank Mayor Schaubert for talking the bridge at the Western State University for the past two months. So I appreciate a lot of students got down and working and melding with the physical, so we appreciate it. Thank you.
We have to have a wake-up. Anybody else? All right, I'm going to move on to items for future meeting.
If you wanted to agendaise an item, considering the location of opioid medication, that's what we know.
Everybody? Anybody else? Okay. Anything for a future space session? Oh, we just have that addendum to the budget. Of course, you have approved the MOU, so you'll be getting it. I'm not sure how much it will go up. I think the increase was about a hundred thousand. I don't know how much more it's going to go up. So we should be receiving, and I asked her once to calculate that to get that to you so that we would have it up in your book. Okay, at this time, council initiated business discussion regarding implementation of term limits for the position of mayor. Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, we have the council initiated item. The item was brought forward on the March 14, 2023, by Councilmember Taylor. Councilmember, to the request of this item, we agendaised a discussion to discuss implementation of term limits, bringing the position in line with the current term limits of council member positions. I would add this to the panel. Anyone for this?
Thank you. Thank you, city clerk. So yes, prior to the city council discussion, we just wanted to provide some information on each of the items. This item is, after review by the city attorney, a lot of the council candidates have scored potential placement on that feature value.
Mayor? It just, we did a districting. We had four council members that we established a mayor position at that time. I believe it was assumed that that, the mayor position would just have the term limitations just like the council position. But I'm pretty glad with my counsel that it's not quite the case. So I'm just offering this, that we need to make all the positions within the city align. It won't affect incumbent or anything like that, but it doesn't go backwards. But it would be put on the ballot for the residents who are pre in November of 2024. They have to ask and answer and question the question behind the reason and why it went down. It just makes sense to me.
Well, I don't really care one way or the other. I'm just saying that because we're in districts, it's, there's no continuity over a period of time. I think that the city definitely needs to have an elected council and an elected mayor, citywide. Being in the position that we're in now totally evidentates our city. It does totally the opposite of disenfranchising everybody. And that was the reason we got in the position, where because they said we were disenfranchising our voters. Well, the only disenfranchising was the fact that we went into voting districts to where everybody doesn't have a chance to vote for who they want to represent the entire city. And so I, while I'm going to be discussing this, but you know, I'm so opposed to anything that doesn't give anybody an opportunity to serve on the council and for it to be voted on citywide by the people of this town. Yes, Mayor?
At the time all this happened, we had a choice. We could either bring the city up into five districts, which means each of us would have had a half a block. And we had eight thousand. Forty thousand divided by the public, we had eight thousand people. Well, that's what the choice was. We either do that and have five council members, or we add a mayor and four council members. So I just wanted to bring that up as a historical fact.
I was on the planning committee at the time, I remember it. I agree, I think it made sense at the time, but at this point, I think we just need to bring that position into line, the mayor position needs to align with term limits that we sent to the voters before this time. And somehow, well, it just, it just isn't covered, so we try to increase need to cover to make it fair for all the positions.
Well, the other thing with that is, I've been at this for thirty-five years, and this will be my last tour, because I'm getting too old for this. But I will tell you that term limits for people at office is, that's what we have in place. And I'm sorry, I totally disagree with term limits, especially in a small community like ours. I think it's important that the people have an opportunity to have people that they are comfortable with, that are doing the job, represent them, no matter how long it is. I think there's a succession that's nascented and it's forced over the years before we got into districts, and it worked very well for us. And when you have a pool of people where everybody has an opportunity to run citywide, it's the right way to do business. And it's interesting because the gentleman that gets all the money pursuing the cities to go into districts actually wrote the law. So he showed you that he had very selfish motive, and he's made himself a millionaire doing it. Meanwhile, he's destroying small communities, and the next one he's going to be destroying is the city of La Halla. And so, you know, I think, like I said, I'm very opposed to term limits. I'm also opposed to not having citywide elections. And I think that we should all be up there, we should all run every four years. And if the community is happy with this, then so be it. Anyway, that's my two cents.
Somebody, before I was on the council, somebody did put this forward, and you guys did put it forward.
Mr. Taylor, in terms of the term limits or the districts? Term limits was brought by the public.
The public brought that. I haven't done that, okay?
And that was before districts were implemented.
Well, I know it was before districts. I can share that.
Well, the direction is to provide direction to the staff.
That people need to.
Right, so staff is looking to see if this should be an agenda item on a future report with additional staff time invested into providing additional analysis and content to the council's visitors. So we're looking to see if there's enough of things the council would like to do for the future agenda.
Oh, let me add a couple more comments. I think we need to find a way to get more people aboard the city. The city of Stanton, over the years, including recently, has the lowest voter turnout per candidate in the state of California. When you have a council that's determined by, you know, either a few hundred votes or maybe a thousand something votes, maybe if there's only two candidates. You know, I don't think the public is, I'm not sure how, how put it. I think there needs to be more of an annual system. That's why I'm so supportive of low term limits, and I'm so supportive of having citywide elections. Where, you know, and also like the idea of just rotating the mayorship amongst the five members of the council. I think the way we were doing it, there was nothing wrong with that. And so we got forced into what we got forced into. Having five people elected citywide is going to get five great candidates elected. Those people should be in office as long as it's voted in by the public, and they should represent everybody. And, you know, the mayor shouldn't have to represent the whole city by himself. I think it's important that every council member represent the city. And that's what we want to strike. So that's my two cents.
Do you want to call it, Bill?
Here, where's the word?
There are votes. Two were with, I don't know, ten or two, she had her discussions first, during the staff continuing position, the staff report, what was I, council member vote?
Sorry.
If we did the direction, I think you would like staff to come over with bringing back options and research in the staff report to continue to forward with this item.
Oh, no, I think we should sparse it out right now.
I'm sorry, councilmember votes, you can't have the discussion without being formally adjourned. So I was the opportunity for the council member initiated the item, see if they could get the additional votes to agendaise the other item.
No, yes.
Yes. Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Morton?
Yes.
Dan? No. Mr. Schaubert?
No.
So we have three, which is the former minus two votes. So staff will have the directive to move forward with research and staff report this item to the future.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, we'll move on to the next item, which is. Uh, fifteen twelve, the, this, go ahead, Matt, for the procedure.
Mayor, thank you. Before you have item twelve E, city council initiated item, discussion regarding the city's current district-based election system. At the March fourteen, twenty twenty-three city council meeting, Mayor Schaubert requested that this item be addressed. Mayor Schaubert is requesting to discuss the city's current district-based election system.
Yes, thank you, all mayor members of the council. As I mentioned previously, we did have the city attorney's office do a little bit of preliminary research on each of the items under this section. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to city attorney Annaliese to give a little bit of context surrounding district-based elections and challenges that are currently in play.
Thank you, Madam City Manager, leaving council. So the California Voting Rights Act, the city of Stanton's already been through the process of going to by districts. The California Voting Rights Act does not set forth an explicit mechanism for, for lack of a better term, doing districts. However, what the law does say is that ordinance that is enacted in pursuit to the California Voting Rights Act may be or amended or repealed in the same manner. And so our office's preliminary research says to us that the city could, if it's so desired, go back to an at-large system through a repeal of the ordinance. The council ultimately went to work, I don't probably think to that further, but the research shows that this could be simply a repeal of the ordinance. I did want to point out, from a risk perspective, that there has been no public agency that has won a litigation of the California Voting Rights Act. Our office is unaware of any jurisdiction going to by districts and then reversing. I think that the city potentially being the first to do it, certainly be news-worthy. The individual and the law firm suing most of the jurisdictions, Shinkin, still actively suing jurisdictions. I believe, so be it. A few months ago, we got one of these Voting Rights Act letters, and so we figured out one of that process as well. And so we need consideration of this, is this associated with reverting back to an at-large system in terms of what kind of bylaws, depending to be made by the city, is that why districts are promoting what's required in the Voting Rights Act. I'm not sure exactly at this time, when the city gets to two. And last thing I'll say is that there is currently one major case that will point this side and completely concedes all are waiting to hear, that is, the city of Santa Monica case. That case is being conservative represented by a partnership in that, as before, the California Supreme Court right now. That case effectively is looking to set forth standard proof in the California voting rights case. And so a lot of jurisdictions are waiting to see how Supreme Court moves on that case. It's effectively, that will govern probably a lot of jurisdictions. Decisions involve whether or not they're going to fight going to district-based or, you know, they're going to act as transition at large to by districts. And ultimately, it would be that clear how that decision could affect the inverse of being a district-based jurisdiction that's at large.
Okay, I've had a chance to also research this, and everything that was spoken by our lawyer is correct. However, just because you do something doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to be sued. That's number one. Number two, if you're sued, you have an opportunity to either vote in court or not vote in court. And to type a change. If you look at our voting record since we implemented this, it's very dismal. And I think that we have a lot of, actually, I've been collecting data on elections, of citywide elections for the past few years. And if you take a look at this, it's really impacted us in a very negative way. It's also, I believe, disenfranchised a lot of our voters. The reason why it has disenfranchised that is because the way in which our system has been developed, there's no equity. There's no equity in voting. There's no equity in voter base that we have. You know, we try to give different segments of our community people voice. But the way in which our districts have been established, we have disenfranchised groups within those districts over the past few years. I'm for having a motion that we vote for five council members for all five positions, where we go three and two like we had in the past. And then we rotate the mayorship so that every council member has a chance to lead the city and gain the experience of being the mayor and be filling over the floor for that year with the people of the community and being recognized as the leader of the city. And we can't do that the way we are now. And so I would like to go ahead and have staff, well, maybe research a little more. Just because being first doesn't necessarily make it a bad thing. Sometimes being the first makes it a good thing. Maybe Mr. Shrekman will realize what a mistake he made by coming into a city. It's one and a half square miles of residents. Where we pulled up one and a half square miles into the voting districts that we have, which I don't think it's a true representation of the people of the voters. I think that every voter in this city that votes should have an opportunity for the first and every one to be in the council. That's my case.
So being fresh on from elections, like I had the opportunity to walk through the district. And one of the recurring things that I saw was that people would tell me that they never had a politician on the board. I think you mentioned that we want our communities to be more active, right? I think that's by goes in the communities that haven't been on. If we have this competition, I think we're on par tape in very early.
I'd like to echo the councilmember's off versus sentence. As someone who did get elected through district elections, I will say that the barrier is a lot lower to enter politics if you don't have a political background, if you aren't districted. Instead of having to, you know, go after, I think the number of voters is 20,000 voters in Stanton, and I only had to go after, you know, a quarter of that. And I think it does lower the barrier, barrier especially for those who are minorities like myself, being the first Asian-American elected on the council. Despite our city being, you know, representing Asian or so, I have to say that I do think it does work in elevating certain voices that would otherwise not contribute to politics. And I'm sure councilmember Torres probably had the same experience since he ran and his politics was hard. And additionally, I look back to differ on what you said regarding voter turnout. When I ran in 2020, possibly because it was an election year where there was a president on the ballot, the turnout was 80% possible, you know? So a lot of people voted. And I think that whether or not they vote depends on the public servant's ability to go out and inspire them and give them a reason to vote. And so having smaller districts make it more possible for that person-to-person outreach to happen. I truly believe that because of districting, we have three new council members in this council. That would not have happened had we not had districted. I think before we came on board, the previous council members served for decades. And I think because there, you know, there wasn't districts, the barrier to enter politics is very high. And, you know, my neighborhood, big Stanton north of here, didn't have representation. I believe that we had three council members living on the exact same street, just a few meters from each other. In the previous, you know, how do I say this? Before, before we went to district elections, we had a neighborhood that was very well represented on council, a neighborhood like mine, which wasn't well represented. And I'm so glad that when I talk to people, it isn't because people don't want to join politics, it's just that it's too difficult to join. But now I'm very hopeful that looking forward, even though we have term limits now with, you know, two terms, there are many people on the pipeline that are willing to step up and run because it's not a safe place. And we have, you know, things our citizens can have and encourage us to be involved in, towards participating more in government.
I don't want the liability of doing that. I mean, I don't think it is fair for us to open up Stanton for those bulldogs that'll just come in and try to tear us apart. I mean, that's why we pulled this whole thing together and did it so quickly to begin with. It's because they were ready to tear us up, you know? It was going to be tens of millions of dollars. And I don't, I just, I don't want to expose us to that level of liability, you know? I don't think it's fair to stand. But the people that told you nobody knocked on their doors, they're lying to you. Because I've walked the entire city more than once.
The areas in which they told me that were almost pretty much our underserved areas of our community.
I've walked it.
I think it is a very big necessity.
I've had people follow me in a car because the neighborhood was so bad. I mean, I've walked the entire city more than once. And I know a lot of our other council people do, because I have the same thing told to me. I'm like, well, I'm here, what do you want to talk about, you know? So every time you go out and walk around, you're going to hear that from people. I, I don't, I will not support this whatsoever.
And I did want to say, if I may, we drew the maps, you know? We had our chance to draw the maps several months ago. And so for us to say that, you know, there's not good representation or there's really quality, we are responsible for that. We drew the maps, we approved them, everyone except Donald because he wasn't there at the time. But I think we have to hold ourselves accountable for that. We don't think it's fair that we got the map. And I think that the maps we have are the best possible map we could have at the time. Thank you to Mr. John Warren for being the creator of that map. But I, I do believe that what we have now is really the best possible outcome, given this.
Okay, my turn. I do agree that I don't like the liability that we need to put under. I don't think, well, I think there's a reason nobody's won, because a lot of, a lot of, just values and challenged Shankman. The one I remember the most that was in the news was Van Caster, I believe, they spent over $3 million. They lost. It's, I don't see any way to win the way the law is written for the key roader, whoever wrote the law. I don't think you can beat the law. I think we have to have the diversity that the maps kind of give us for the most part. And I think the council makeup right now does represent that. And for me, when I was able to run, the fact that it was a district, it was much more easily able to afford the entry level money you needed to get started, rather than trying to have to campaign to the whole city, which is at least war times more expensive, something like that. So I think it's the best way. I totally understand what I'm here saying. I would, I can see us being in five districts, actually. I wouldn't be opposed to five districts within the city. I still think it would be like 8,000 people. I don't think it would be a disaster. And I understand the idea of high term limits, the term limits, you could, it's very true that elections are term limits. So I totally understand that too. I'd be happy to negotiate on this, but keep the districts, but possibly eliminating the mayor position to going to five districts. That would appeal to me. I think that would, I think everyone, everybody on the council would, would serve. And to just make kind of a crazy example, it's the city of Los Alamos. They're, they're just a little bigger than La Palma, that's a very small city. It does include Osborn. And they have five council members and they have district elections. I've talked to a couple of their people that I've met on Character Control, and they think it is a small district, but they do campaign, they do know their city. And they do each get a chance to be the leader of the city, the mayor position. So I would definitely be open to talking about that, but not, not getting rid of the districts. I don't think that would, I don't see any way to do it legally without us losing off a lot of money. I don't, I don't see a victory inside. It's one of those situations where I think, even if you feel it's right, you'd be putting your head up against Sacramento middle and Shankman, and I think we'd lose. I'm not, I think there's a positive way to lose.
And I don't disagree with what everybody said, but the reality, there's one other reality that was totally overlooked when we did this. And that was the taking away of nonpartisan politics in the city's head. Right now, two of our districts have a majority of registered political groups and two have a majority of a differing political group. And in a small community like ours, I can predict without a doubt, a shadow of a doubt, whether the political persuasion of that individual is, they're going to get elected in that position. Now, whether that's fair or not, I don't know. But to me, it doesn't do what the intent of not disenfranchising people is all about. And I don't know how to correct that. Now, the only city that that's going to happen in is a small city. It's not going to happen in San Ana or in Anaheim or Gargan, or Westminster because of the population. But in a smaller community, when you divide the population into a smaller group, you will find that in the communities that are served, it's by, it's by the groups that were trying to do population wise and not politically. But unfortunately, in our city, it is divided not politically, as made what normally should be local government being nonpartisan is no longer nonpartisan. And that's, if that's the way we want to be, that's the way it's going to be. But right now, that is something that does concern me. Yes?
I hear what you're saying, and I think you're probably 100% right on the demographics of it. But we don't miss, we're nonpartisan on the ballot, we don't miss what each person is. And I just, the people I've talked to, I have walked my area, I can't say I've walked every street in my district, but I've certainly walked the majority of them. And nobody has ever asked me what my political background is, they wonder where I live, what I think about issue virtue, but not whether I'm, you know, one party or another. And I don't think most of our citizens, since they don't vote real well, are really, don't happen to go into somebody's background or something to find out whether they're whichever political party or no political party, that they're a member. I just don't think our city, the way they vote, I just don't think they would be into that. I can see how though a campaign may be able to, to, you know, bring that out in people, I can understand that. So I can see where you're coming from. But I think, I think the way we do it is probably the best, because I really, I believe the way the city council has worked since before I was on it is very nonpartisan. I think we work for the best interests of the city. We may have different ideas of what the best interests of the city are, but I truly think, when, when I was just saying, when three lived, three council members lived on one street and two in the other neighborhood, I still, no matter what, I don't think they worried about their neighborhoods. I really believe they did what was best for the city. And I still think we do that. I think that's really the big reason we, we run. We can't, it can't be the money we're preaching, we can't be running for money. I don't think we're running for prestige, there isn't that much of it. It's got to be a public service type of, type of adventure for us, an adventure maybe, instead of a venture. But that's all I've got.
Okay, well, the reality is, is that we're an hour apart from a licensed system, I'm saying. And it's because we have been forced into voting districts. And those districts were dividing the city up into four segments, of which we have different parties in a majority. The outcomes of our election are going to be predetermined in the future because of the amount of registered voters in particular party. And that's, if that's the way it was, that's the way it is, that's the way it is. I'm just telling you that nonpartisanship destroys local government as it does local agencies that I've served on, and I see it. And unfortunately, that's the direction they're going. So I just want to know that. Go ahead.
Yeah, so regarding the predisposition of our voters, I think that that's, that's going to happen with, with, you know, our districting. So, I mean, that's just something that happens, you know, democracy, right? That's something that we need to prevent even from moving off of the district-wide elections.
No, no, and I understand that, but that was used to be very difficult for partisanship among the city. When you have a citywide election, it's, it's, it's more equity. It takes away from the partisanship in the election process. Because we went into four small areas, that partisanship plays a much bigger role in determining the outcome of an election. And that's the reality of it. I'm not saying that it's bad, I'm just saying that that's the reality. I'm also saying that I agree with you that having small districts, it's great that we have that personal relationship with our community or our neighborhood that we represent. But there's a good side and a bad side to it. And that's why they messed with us when they did that. And what we had going in the past, where we had a citywide election, to me, that was the most equitable plan that we could do. And that way you end up getting a opportunity, as I said before, we need to represent everyone in the community and rotate the ballots. So, you know, I can see that there's no interest in, at this time, in fighting Mr. Shrekman and his, all his such things. But I did want to point that out. So thank you for your consideration.
Would you consider talking about going to five districts?
Right now, we're, let's break, break right to your next motion first that we might be discussing. Okay, we can discuss it back then. Okay?
We have a direction as to...
All right, let's run, I have action.
Anybody else? All people left. And any of those? And then I have the last, because I'm just going on the floor. Ms. Mayor, I'll now proceed to item 12. The City Council initiated a discussion regarding the feasibility of a moratorium on street vending. At the March 14, 2023 City Council meeting, Mayor Schubert requested that this item be adjourned for discussion. Mayor Schubert is requesting to discuss the feasibility of a moratorium on street vending.
Honorable Mayor Members of the Council, again, we can have the City Attorney's Office do some preliminary research of there are state regulations surrounding street vending. And at this time, I'll ask the City Attorney to provide that content for you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, or Madam City Manager. I think I'm down to show the, couldn't... I appreciate your time and thank you for letting me fill in here. So our office has looked into this. Just by my background, there was a law passed a couple of years ago, it's fairly recent, I want to say 2019. It was SB 946. And that law, which is now in codified in Government Code Section 51038, 51039, limits a local authority, their ability to regulate sidewalk vendors. It's directly on point, it's preemptive. So the city is bound to follow what this law says. The city already has a sidewalk vending ordinance, which regulates this. Again, just through a cursory review, it looks like that that sidewalk vending ordinance was enacted within the parameters of SB 946. And our, our look into this law has led us to believe that a moratorium cannot be placed on sidewalk vending. The, if the council wished to move forward with a specific item regarding sidewalk vending, we would look at SB 946 and look at those regulations and see if there's a specific ask from the council. We would compare it with the state regulations to see if there was a way that we could specifically address. specifically address it in the city's municipal code, but for purposes of a moratorium, that's not allowed.
Your work, I had a chance to read through that, what portion of that case, and he's right about it, a moratorium program. Now, moratoriums are either one year, two years, or temporary. It's not a permanent act. If it's not a permanent act, what portion of that restricts that? Because it's not addressed at a specific time.
So if you look at Government Code Section 51038, that sets forth all of the things cities can and can't regulate, and one of the prohibitions is a citywide ban on sidewalk vending. And the argument would be is that if you put a moratorium on sidewalk vending, or a specific portion of sidewalk vending, the language of that specific Government Code Section would be...
Isn't there a line, is there a difference between banning and moratorium? To me, a moratorium is not banning, a moratorium is a function of local government where they have a chance to review and take a look at a regulation specifically of what we have, like you just forementioned, the word that we would take a look at to see if there's some things we can do with our local people to, to give it more substance or to remove things that are kind of like people's state requirements. To me, a moratorium is not banning, I'm not sure, I don't think the word banning is synonymous with moratorium.
And you're right, Mayor, and I, you know, maybe a better word to use, prohibiting. And so even if the city enacted a moratorium, the problem is that the city would be prohibiting sidewalk vendors from being able to obtain a permit, because the city's already permit system that's, that's codified. And so I think you are right, there's a, there's a difference between a moratorium and banning, it is a choice of words, but the Government Code does, does say that the city cannot, and that act a prohibition, a citywide prohibition on sidewalk vending. So again, I think too, I'd address your concerns as something that we could look at as a specific concern regarding sidewalk vending, and see if we can find a way to make it work with Government Code Section 51038.
As I recall, there had to be a recent one, the city of San Ana had a thousand vendors that would per se. Okay, that's number one. Number two, I don't think, has anybody put a moratorium on street vending in general since the enactment a couple of years ago, the city's state requirements?
So I'm not sure if I found my head, if other cities have tried to pursue a moratorium route. I think again, just we should, we should look into this, I think that would be risky. And then as a relation as to why, I forgot, sorry, what city you said has removed certain vendors, you know, again, the Government Code does permit the cities to regulate sidewalk vending, and the city standards does have regulations, so you have to get a permit of certain health and safety standards that they have to meet, but certain physical restrictions in terms of operating, they're operating a commercial district, they have to be subjected to the same hours that the businesses in that district. So, so there are regulations that are permitted, so I'm not sure the circumstances of those other cities, but I would, I would suspect that if there was a crackdown on sidewalk vending, it would be because there were violations of that city's municipal code that were, that were authorized under this specific provision. That's my best, my best guess.
And, and of course, the reason I'm bringing this up here is because we've had a, an onslaught of unlicensed vending going on in our city. I think there was a report from our city manager recently, how many did we have that day that we visited?
I believe we visited six state locations, and that was in conjunction with Orange County Public Health, and, and that's how the city was going to shut down their 100 food vending locations, also in conjunction with Orange County Health, going through checking for appropriate permits. County does have a permit system that allows for different types of vending. As of a presentation we received in January, not one of the, for lack of a better word, pop-up style restaurants that we're seeing, not one of them has been trying to apply for a permit through the health agency. So through that, they are able to enforce their requirements and regulations. Of the, of the six that we visited, none of them had a valid permit, and so again, Orange County Public Health was able to enforce their regulations.
I had a chance to get a hold of the director asked for that, and our staff, and Jim did a great job orchestrating that. You know, it was sad because I know when I had asked, they're very cooperative, because I think that it is organized. I had a chance to get at least eight licensed places, very similar trucks, that I believe belong to one person or one group. I'm not sure of what was discovered by our sheriff's department. The other thing is, is at the end of the time, when I asked them to leave, they took the food, put it in a plastic bag, and threw it in a Home Depot by getting moved down to the next site. So, you know, to me, I think it's important that we apply the consideration of public health and people of our residents. I'm not saying that the food is bad, I'm not saying that they're trying to poison anybody, but there is, there is regulations that are needed today. The other thing is, how would you like to be a business that pays eight or nine thousand dollars a month in rent in our city, and sells the same food, and has workman's comp, employers, insurance, and overhead? And the guy on the sidewalk selling the same thing you are, for a mere fraction, and there's no taxes, and there's no supervision? So to me, I think it's something that hopefully we can address with our city ordinance. I would like to maybe look at ways in which we can solidify an improvement of our ordinance under state law to better protect our community and to make sure that they're, even the vendors themselves are being treated fairly, but also that our residents that have businesses, that serve food are also being treated fairly. You know, to me, had a chance to kind of equate myself with the individuals who are out there, they're very skilled in what they do. I also know that there is a concern, I'm not saying this is true, of human trafficking, where people that come into our state are actually paying off the people that actually got them to get here by working in these facilities, because I know many of them, after talking to their, the people that were responsible for them being there, were ordered to come back out despite the fact that the sheriff's department had asked them for these strict times. So to me, the people that are in charge are not very legal themselves, and their operations are illegal, and maybe that's why all of them are, the one person, two people that are running this, don't want to go to the county for permits, because then they would be identified as a large contingency. I think they prefer to just hit and miss like they're doing, anywhere they can, and as you know, Beach Boulevard is a prime location after that. So there's a lot of things, there's a lot more to this than, than, than I think a lot of people are aware of. I think probably our best thing is to continue our working with the Orange County Health Department, Mr. Renn is of course working with the sheriff's department. I think the nice thing is, is we're not tying our deputies up for chasing food vendors, but I do know that, I appreciate them being there to protect the health department workers. So after we did a good job this last Saturday, I think that we can just monitor it, however the one young lady that was selling tamale's, I was back out the next night. And the thing is that I'm not so concerned about her tamale stand, as I am the fact that we are really pushing all our restaurants about their signage, and we're issuing fines, and she's putting these signs up all down Beach Boulevard, these big signs. So I mean, sometimes, you know, we have to take a look at what's fair and what our priorities are, and that's where I've got to go at this time. Thank you for being patient with my position on this. I think the thing I'm asking for is maybe first at least look at our ordinance, if it's not too kind consuming, and see if we can improve it. But also, I would like your support in continuing our enforcement and working with the health department, making sure that we protect our... Thank you. So I request is something maybe to have the city manager work with the attorney to review and see if there's anything that we can't do maybe to build more credence or foundation to our existing ordinance, because this could become a major problem, because we're not a very big city. So if we have fines, that's a lot in our job, and you know, we're not very big. Thank you.
I'll make a motion, allow?
Okay, I'll second it. Go ahead, Madam President.
Councilmember George?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Putnam Dan?
Yes.
And Mayor Schaubber?
Yes, thank you.
The other one sees, the city council considers, before the research and staff report, I feature me.
Okay, we'll move on to item 13, speaking from council.
Sorry, I was talking about the city council. No, nothing from the city council, thank you.
Is, is H D doing okay in Philippines?
She, yes, I've been trying not to bug her. She's...
My two granddaughters are Filipino, so I gave her some great tips.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure she appreciates it.
Hey, I'm from, I'm exactly right.
Just a reminder that at the next council meeting, I will be requesting an excuse absence and community services distracted and booby ass, and gracious enough to accept staying on the side of acting being an entrepreneur, but I'm being...
Oh. Great job. Are you getting a bit of that? All right, tonight, we're going to hear a report from our Orange County Sheriff's Department.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Sergeant Katuris, and Sergeant for State Resources. I'll be covering February's fiscal data for State Resources. Captain Walters, sorry you couldn't be here today, he's out of state celebrating his current 50th frame membership. In February, Stanton deputies responded to 1,0097 calls for service. That was an average of 39 calls per day. When I've been assigned calls for service, deputies observed 257 violations of law and acted on them appropriately. Deputies made 23 arrests, 13 of those were felony bookings, three of those were misdemeanor bookings, three were warrant bookings, and four of them were driving under the influence bookings. Deputies also issued 51 misdemeanor citations. Our Stanton motor deputy issued 239 traffic citations. Our gang unit arrested five documented gang members in the month of February, which brings the total to seven year to date. Stanton deputies handled the following criminal activity. For the month of February, we handled 10 violent assaults, five burglaries, 35 deaths, and 11 stolen vehicles. When it comes to investigations, Stanton investigators have a very busy month pertaining to various crimes that have occurred within the city. There were assigned 73 total cases, 38 of them are ongoing investigations, and 35 have been closed. Our Stanton enforcement team had 17 arrests, eight of them were felony arrests, nine of them were misdemeanor arrests. They had eight citations, all eight for probably... They had 30 homeless contacts, 30 probationer contacts, 15 parolee contacts, 35 prostitution contacts. They recovered three stolen vehicles and seized two firearms. Additionally, the set team seized 97 grams of methamphetamine, 162 grams of fentanyl, and 67 grams of GHB. The set team was constantly, consistently trying to stay busy and keep our city safe. When it comes to our homeless liaison deputy pilot program for the month of February, our HLO deputy has been very busy and successful. More importantly, the communication with the homeless outreach coordinators and court enforcement is outstanding. Because of this program, there are more services being offered on a more regular basis. Because of the program's success thus far, and with the support of city council, we added a second HLO deputy. Deputy Casada was assigned to the second HLO position. He brings a lot of knowledge and teamwork to the team. We'd like to thank the city council for making this possible. Our response times for the month of February for priority one calls, our average response time was four minutes and eight seconds. Our priority two calls were 16 minutes and 55 seconds, and our priority three calls were 28 minutes and 36 seconds. Also wanted to point out, our Orange County Sheriff's Department had a rolling PDI for the month of February, and said it was standing, which was free to the city, and the task force stopped 22 vehicles, arrested three for driving under the influence, and gave nine citation. This was a very productive effort by, and teamwork for this great city. We have five new deputies starting training in Stanton. They are very motivated and excited to protect and serve this community. The Stanton station will be completed with the upgrades by the end of April, and we look forward to sharing off our new station to everyone. I want to thank the city staff for being great partners with the sheriff's department. The teamwork is outstanding, and we are proud of our working relationship. This concludes my presentation, and I have to answer questions.
Go ahead, Gary. On your statistics on drug seized, if I heard you correctly, fentanyl?
Yes, sir.
And?
We have 90, our sent team, they seized 97 grams of methamphetamine, 162 grams of fentanyl, and 67 grams of GHB. Those were all, all observations.
Oh, that's fantastic. Do you still see a lot of heroin out there?
Yes, sir, we do.
And are people still using needles more than smoking it, or how's that?
It's a combination that typically the subjects who eject are more, require, it's a more quicker high to eject rather than smoking, or they're more addictive at that point on their ejecting.
Have you heard anything about that drug that, it's a veterinarian drug that they're mixing with some of the other drugs that's supposed to make the high longer or something, stretches it out, or something like that?
I don't know, sir.
Triampline is called, something like that. And maybe, hopefully it hasn't reached our city, but I just want to say thank you for all that you're doing, and also just make a comment, last week, I approached the city manager, I told her I had this meeting I wanted to talk to her about on... I told her I had this big thing I wanted to talk to her about on Beach Boulevard. Because it went from my house to Cattella, right turn on the tollway to Garthrow Boulevard. I didn't see one homeless person. Nobody with shopping carts. Nobody with stuff all over park benches. Nobody laying in the middle of the sidewalk. It was so fantastic. I just want to say thank you to everybody that's, that's been part of this. Because it's just, that is the first time since I've lived here, I think, that I've been able to drive down Beach Boulevard and not see anybody. And that's not to say someone's going to pop out of the woodwork or whatever. I'm sure that'll happen. But it's nice to see the numbers, actually see the numbers down. So again, thank you to everybody that had something to do with that. Mr. Ren, our city manager, everybody, especially you guys and our public safety people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sergeant, I, I wanted to let you know how impressed I was at SWAT setup at Super Kings adjacent park. It was a well-organized and orchestrated event. The reason I was here, because I was there checking on my firefighters, which you guys take really good care of. And it was nice to see the cooperative effort between the OCFA and the OCSB. I thought that everybody seemed to have their task in hand. It was nice to see the response from people that were called in, that arrived there from their homes or from wherever they came from. And it's nice to know that we have that tool available to us if we ever need. So if you please pass that on to everyone that was in concern, I would, I appreciate that.
Yes, Ms. Mayor.
Okay, great. And also, please thank the deputies that took the time to assist our health department society. I got a call from the health department. They were extremely satisfied with the help that they got. And it encourages them to come back and help us in the future.
Yes, sir.
So I know it's not a high priority, but it was, it really made an impact with the county health department. So please thank those individuals also.
Yes, sir.
And Jim, welcome back. Everything was okay while you were gone, but we left a lot of work for you. Any other comments from staff? Any other questions? All right, everybody have a good evening. Thank you.